Do we have anything to review? Move on, we'll move on to the approval of minutes of May. None, I'll close public hearing A. Move on to public hearing B. To consider a vitler's license for Leadbette's two thirty-two Main Street.
Again, all inspections were complete, property taxes, personal property taxes and any sewer fees are current and staff recommends approval.
Great, thank you. Anyone wish to speak for or against the issuing of this license? Hearing none, I'll close public hearing B.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And at the manager's request, we are going to take public hearing D next to discuss the, so public hearing D, to discuss the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen municipal capital and WPCF budgets. Ma'am?
Thank you. So I'm gonna try it from here this year, be a little different. Um, whoops. So, um, when we think about the local budget, a lot of people see that as the taxes, as how we determine how many, how many dollars in property tax we need to, um, collect. Um, this year I'm kind of swapped my presentation up a little bit because I want to say right off, right at the beginning, that local property taxes fund more than just town services. Town services are included, but it also includes our school assessment and our county assessment. And there are lots of services that come with that, and I'm not going to read through them all, but this is just to give you a sense that there are an awful lot of things that are funded through the local property tax. So, Penobscot County, the school unit and the town are separate legal entities. We do not have internal control over one another, but we do have to work collaboratively and in concert in order to provide this wide array of services to the, to the public. So, each of these units have their own budget process governed by their own internal doc, internal processes. What I can say is consistent across all of them is that all the meetings are open for the public to attend, that there is an intense review of budget lines, that all three entities discuss the needs to continue operations and the impact of those costs on taxpayers, and there's a public adoption process. Might look different in each one of the entities, but those things would be the same across the board. So, Penobscot County actually runs on a calendar year, so their year starts in January, ends December thirty first. We pay our assessment all in one chunk in September. For this year, they finalized their budget into, in December. Our assessment is six hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. It's up seventy-three thousand dollars, which is an increase of almost thirteen percent. And there are really two primary drivers of that increase. One is that Orano's valuation is growing at a different rate than many other communities in Penobscot County. So think about some of those communities where they have lost industry, that their decline shifts the burden more onto the communities with any amount of growth. And there were two significant increases in the budget. The first was related to regional dispatch. City of Bangor has been paying for regional dispatch for a very long time and not using it. They're actually bringing Bangor in to answer calls, which is Bangor's right to do that. But that required an additional six people to be hired in dispatch, so dispatch saw a very significant jump in their expense budget this year. And jail services continue to cost a lot of money, and although it's, um, there, it is severely underfunded by the state, there is still an increase that goes into effect every year to fund the, the jails at the local level. So, those two things are really what are driving the, um, the county budget. The school board held its board workshops in the spring. They had a district budget meeting, which is a lot like the old fashioned town meetings, in May. And tomorrow, they're actually going to hold the referendum to approve their budget. The total ta, cost to the town for school services is six point eight million dollars. This is up this year, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars or four percent. And I think a lot of this was driven by the increase in the mandatory local share. And when you look at their sheet, the other thing that you see increasing is the cost of special education. So the town, which is what the council oversees. We held seven public budget workshops. We started in late April and finished up on the last day of May. This is, um, the process includes this public hearing so that citizens can give input tonight. And then we will either go back to the drawing board next week, or council will tell me that it's fine to move forward to June twenty-fifth for adoption. This budget costs the town four point seven million dollars. It's an increase of fifty-six thousand dollars or one point two percent. This increase is primarily a result of an increase in operations offset by increased projected revenues. So, we're up in operation costs, but we're also up in our projected revenues. So, we ready to move on to the components of the budget? There we go. So, in total, the expenditure budget is a little over eleven million dollars. It's up two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars over last year. And some of that is indicative of a move from, we used to pay some of our debt out of the capital budget. We have moved that all onto the operating budget, so that's a little bit different. And we have some increases in operational costs, which I will get into as we go through the budget. So, overall, expenses are up two point six percent. Revenues are also up, which is interesting to see, good to see. General revenues are those revenues which we expect to bring in as a course of doing business, so it's user fees, it's administrative revenue that is generated, ambulance billings. The revenue sharing is municipal, state municipal revenue sharing, which after going down for many years, we've lost about four hundred thousand dollars of municipal revenue sharing. It was nice to see, we're starting to turn the corner, and there's actually a twenty-two thousand dollar increase this year, so it's nice to be going up and not going down. Homestead and Betty are reimbursements that we get for exemptions in residential property. Homestead, people who live in their homes can qualify for an exemption of twenty thousand dollars of value. And when that happens, the town gets reimbursed sixty-two percent of that. That's up from fifty percent last year, so that's where you see a lot of that gain. The other gain is with business equipment tax exemption, which is shifting several things that used to be reimbursed by the state at a hundred percent now is exempt from taxation and will get reimbursed at fifty percent. So there's a corresponding loss of value with that. Capital revenues, these are the revenues that we anticipate to make the capital budget work, so some grants, use of funds, so capital reserves and downtown tax increment financing dollars are wrapped up in our capital revenues. Assigned funds are, I'm sorry, unassigned funds is our fund balance. Council makes a determination how much money to pull each year, and thus far we're at four hundred thousand dollars. Assigned funds are funds that have been committed for, by council to be used for a particular purpose. In this case, most of those assigned funds are to pay a debt associated with an economic development bond that dates many years in the past that we continue to have to pay an annual bond on, so we've, we have all the money for that and we parse it out on an annual basis. And restricted funds are downtown, are, I'm sorry, tax increment financing dollars. So those are dollars that can only be spent for very narrow purposes. And a total of six point four million dollars, so we're up about three point six percent. So, when you crunch all those numbers, what, um, what we see is that for municipal services, we are looking at four point seven million dollars net, so that's what we have to collect in property taxes to fund municipal services. This is up a total of fifty-six thousand dollars over last year or one point two percent. So, it's great to see the numbers, but what does it mean? What is different? In this budget process, I think council really focused on trying to create a responsible budget. They wanted to continue to maintain services at the level that we have seen. They wanted to shore up some areas where we knew we had some concerns and most of those concerns came in the form of staffing. So this budget includes two additional people in the public works department, a clerk, two staff assessing department to assist in the assessing department. The firefighter paramedic was actually brought in last year and resulted in no net increase. In fact, it was a decrease in the budget for that person, but I felt like it was important to put the staff out there. We re-categorized overtime that was, we were expending quite a rate and actually found a little bit of savings there. And it, this also includes increasing library hours, five, five hours a week. So, we continue to make capital investment along the same path. As I tell council, it is a minimum path, in my opinion, that we're gonna, we're having a hard time keeping up with the capital needs, especially in infrastructure. If you look around, we have sidewalks that need to be addressed and roads that need to be addressed. And so, the plan that we put forth was a minimum, but I think responsible, plan, and council has accepted it thus far. So, let's talk about that capital improvement plan. So, we spend money on capital equipment, infrastructure, facilities, and then reserve is savings for the future. To put money away now so that later when we need to buy things, we are able to do it with less draw on the tax rate. It's what helps us keep that pretty stable. The capital reserve budget, these are total expenses, and they're up about eighty-six thousand dollars or six percent. When you look at the net, so the net is the amount of the expense minus the revenues that we have anticipated, non-tax revenues that we have anticipated. So, as you can see, we're anticipating using a hundred thousand dollars of reserves to pay for our equipment. Infrastructure, it's, we don't use reserves for infrastructure, but we do have a few grants. We have some state grants and then we have a project that's in there, oh whoops, that's the next one. So we have some state grants that are helping fund a couple of projects. And facilities, we have, um, the facilities budget has a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar holder, placeholder on revenue. The idea being if we don't get grants or donations enough to do the project, we won't do the project. And I'll talk a little bit about what that project is. And then the reserves are a hundred percent funded from taxes. So, the taxes, we need eight hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars in taxes to fund our capital budget. So, what do we want to fund it for? We need a public works pickup truck, a public works medium duty truck, and a police cruiser. When we talk about infrastructure, we have a project planned on North Main Avenue that will deal with some drainage, sidewalks, and the street, which will see some minor changes along North Main Ave. Mill Street, the lower part of Mill Street is right now in the midst of a drainage and sidewalk sewer and street project, water as well. Gardner Road, we're looking to gravel, the gravel part, do a shim, an overlay, and a binder across the entire of Gardner Road, and then a chip seal course to travel on. So it's a little bit different. It should look a lot like Penobscot Street does right now. We did the same application on Penobscot Street. And we want to take care of some drainage issues there. And then Myrtle and Juniper need some attention, so there's an overlay planned on Juniper and Myrtle. If you look at the pictures, the one with the orange sign is Mill Street and the one with the sidewalk is Myrtle. Good? So, Harrison Avenue is on the left. And probably the largest item in the budget this year is the Route Two culvert replacement, which is as you're heading out of town towards VZ and you get to the gully by the, by gas. There is a culvert very, very deep in the, um, in the ground there, and it is failing. And so that's a state road which opened up federal funds for us, state funds, I'm sorry, state funds. But it is on a, it's on a match, so our match for this project is estimated to be at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we applied for and received a ninety-five thousand dollar grant to help offset the local match. Winter Haven Drive is having some pretty severe drainage issues. And so we want to address those in this capital plan. And we have a five-year plan to address the sidewalks on College Ave. So we have been putting aside twenty-five thousand dollars a year with the thought being this year we should have fifty thousand dollars and Rob's gonna go out and do a fairly substantial section of College Avenue sidewalks to bring them back up to where we would like to see them with curb and overlay. So, capital facilities, I had talked about the Marden Park Rec complex, for lack of a better term. Where Rec, Marden Park, it has some pretty significant drainage issues and we've reached a point with that particular facility that we either have to decide we're gonna put some money into it or decide we're not going to use it for its intended purpose. So, thinking that we want to put a little bit of money into it, we also started thinking about the comprehensive plan and the call for playgrounds outside of just the center of town. And a request for a pump track, and so we currently are evaluating the feasibility of putting that all together, and if it does happen at this point, it is, where it is budgeted to happen with outside funding. So, if, once we get the budget together, if council wanted to do something else, that would be for a future year. The Keith Anderson Community House, we have a beautiful community house. It's one of the oldest buildings in all of Orano. We've reached a point that it needs some pretty significant, um, help. Both the exterior of the building, something needs to happen with the exterior of the building. And inside, we have electrical, some electrical issues and some energy efficiency issues. It's a very expensive building to operate. Instead of simply finding the cheapest alternative for how to address the needs at the Keith Anderson House, instead council is sup, supporting at this point ten thousand dollars being taken out of the downtown and transit oriented TIF district to actually review, have somebody come in and look at the needs and give council kind of the spectrum of, here's the absolute minimum that we need to do, all the way up to, do we want to try to preserve this as a historic type building? I think a lot's been done to it, so I'm not sure you would hit the true historic preservation, but do we, do we want to stop doing things that are not helping with that? And then the last project is the town office painting and trim repair. And while you look at this building and say, ah, it's a brick building, it's a brick building that has trim, and at the base of most of that trim, when we did the project to fix the drainage, we discovered that it was rotten. So we need to fix the bottom of the trim and then everything needs to be painted just because it's ready. So, that's facilities. So, at the very beginning of the present, of the capital budget, I talked about putting money aside to allow us to not have such a erratic draw on the tax rate. And here are the funds that we would look to put money into. I think most of them are pretty explanatory. The landfill closure reserve might be something that people would not understand what that is, but we have a close, we have a commercial, construction demolition debris landfill right now. And there are cells within that build-out plan. So, when a cell fills up, there is actually a very expensive process in capping and closing that cell and opening another cell. Instead of having to pay, last time we did this, it was close to four hundred thousand dollars. So instead of having to pay that all at once, council's been putting fifteen thousand dollars a year into a reserve to help offset that cost. So those are those two budgets. So people like to see how this impacts the tax rate because this is the piece of the municipal budget that does impact the tax rate. So, over last year, you see there's a total change, an increase of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars or three point three seven percent in the commitment. And when we say commitment, those are the dollars that we need to raise from taxes, property taxes. So, council often talks about mills, which our tax rate that we are projecting is twenty-seven dollars per one thousand dollars of valuation. And we've broken it out so you could see where those, how that is allocated. So, ten dollars and forty-six cents per thousand would stay at the town. Fifteen dollars and thirteen cents goes to the school, and a dollar and forty-one cents goes to the county. I see people writing. Yep. Good? Back to that one, are you all set? We will also put this up on the website tomorrow morning. So, when we, so this is a total increase of a dollar per thousand dollars of assessed taxable value. So for the school in the county, that's seventeen cents. I'm sorry, for the town in the county, it's seventeen cents per thousand, and for the school, it's sixty-six cents per thousand. We've had a change in the valuation which makes some of those numbers look a little odd, but Belle and I hand calculated it all, so they're, they are correct. Good? So how do we calculate the tax rate? We take the dollars that we need to raise from the property tax. We divide it by the total assessed value of the town that is taxable, and that gives us the tax rate. So what that tells us is that the county has finished its piece of that calculation. The school is on its way to finishing that piece. Council's on its way. But the assessed value is still up in the air and we won't know that until the end of July. So, when we think about that assessed, um, the assessed valuation, what the impacts are for this year, just the things I've already said, that a change in law has shifted some value that we had to exempt. And that equates to a two million dollar loss in taxable value. And our assessed value calculation is still in progress. And I've had some people ask me about the ongoing data collection process, the revale. That has nothing to do with taxes this year. We, we have to collect every, all the information before that would impact the, the calculation. So, what does this mean for somebody who is in an owner-occupied home? They qualify for a homestead exemption and they have a house that's valued at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, right off the bat, they're only being taxed on a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And this just gives you a sense of the difference. So you're gonna see about a hundred and fifty dollar increase in your property tax from last year to this year. With about thirty of that coming from the town, twenty, thirty of that to the county, and the rest for the school. So if you don't qualify for a homestead, you're paying on all of your hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. You see everything goes up a little bit. You good? So, what this pie shows is every dollar that is delivered to the town, thirty-nine percent of it stays here, five percent of it goes to the county, so five cents goes to the county, thirty-nine cents stays here, and fifty-six cents goes to support the schools. So, every year, So every year, we get questions about why our mill rate is so high. And I tried to figure out a way that I could try to kind of address that because um I thought it was very interesting that in a state where there are four hundred and ninety-one municipalities, we are a hundredth in total taxable value. We are fifty-second in the tax assess- assessment that we commit, so those total dollars that we need. Um we are eighteenth in total population and we are first in the percentage of tax exempt property. So just as an exercise, 'cause sometimes what we hear from people who are frustrated with their taxes is that we don't get anything from the University of Maine. And I will just tell you that that's not exactly true. Um I think we get quite a bit from the University of Maine. But along with the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar pilot that we get from the university and all that the university brings to make us a larger community and the traffic that comes through town, we also get three hundred and eighty-six million dollars of tax exempt property. So to put that in perspective, if we, if all property was taxed the same, our mill rate this year, proposed mill rate would be fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. So I thought that was kind of an interesting telling piece. I also thought it was very interesting because, you know, we, we hold ourselves as kind of comparable. We have these comparable, comparable communities. And the, the big issue is while we have one of the higher um populations outside of Bangor around, um we also have the, one of the lower um or the lowest um mill rate, I'm sorry, the lowest uh taxable valuation of any of the w- entities that we would consider our comparables to the tune of almost three hundred million dollar difference between us and Brewer. Um two hundred and five thou- two hundred and, sorry, three hundred thousand dollar difference between us and Brewer. Nope. I truncated my numbers, I'm sorry. It is three hundred million. Thirty million with Old Town, uh two hundred and five million with Hamden and six hundred and twenty million with Ellsworth. So big differences. So what that means is we have this community where we have by sometimes close to four um thousand more people in our population um that we are providing service for. And this demand for full services because of our population and our um proximity to the university, we have the lowest taxable valuation from which to draw. So there's a, there's a shift there. So I just wanted to address that. That's new. So if you're all set, I'd like to go on to WPCF. So our water pollution control facility, and for people who might not follow WPCF, it, this would also affectionately be known as sewer, um is um operated as a separate proprietary fund. So it is funded through the revenues that it derives and not the tax dollars. So the entire WPCF budget is one point six million dollars. There's an increase of a hundred and seven thousand dollars or seven percent this year. That is almost entirely as the result of a jump in a debt payment um schedule. We had refinanced some debt and we had started at this level and this is the year we took the jump to the next level. Um this year, it has limited appropriations into capital reserve and it requires a user fee increase of twenty-five cents per hundred cubic feet to fund the operations. And we can talk about what that means in just a minute. So uh capital has a proposed budget of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's a decrease of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And you see this in WPCF because some projects are really big expense wise and some projects aren't quite so big expense wise, um which is why we tend, we have been putting money into reserve so that we've just been paying for projects out of reserve. So capital facilities, they need to replace a, a roof on the Headworks building. And um then infrastructure, they have a Kell Street Interceptor that we did the engineering for this fiscal year, this current fiscal year and plan to repair next year. And uh relining a portion of Margin Street. And then engineering for Chapel Road. Um in a couple of years, Public Works has got a major project on Chapel and College Heights. And I think this is part of that um pre-work. Joe goes in first. Um so we wanted to maintain the current service level. We had added a staff person mid-year last year um to address some concerns around um uh the collection system primarily and also um succession planning. We're gonna see a pretty significant over um turnover of personnel in the coming years. And what we've found is uh we tend to hire people who don't have all the licenses and then work with them to get the licenses is, is, there are not a lot of uh sewer um operators out there that um are licensed at our level that want to move. And um this year, we're gonna continue to work on our capital plan and uh limited reserve appropriations for this year and probably next year. And um the proposed to um increase the sewer use fees. So what does that mean? That means after years of um staying at four dollars and fifty-four cents per hundred cubic feet, we um began a very slow increase. Four dollars and sixty cents in FY seventeen, four dollars and seventy cents in FY eighteen. And this year, it's four dollars and ninety-five cents or a three dollar per quarter minimum charge difference, so twelve dollars a year. That is the, the proposal is that we raise it to them. And that's the end. Somebody said they wanted it quick.
Right. Does anyone have any, thank you Sophie, that was an excellent presentation. Does anyone have any questions regarding the budget? This is the time for public comment. The woman behind the glasses. Oh yes.
My name is Judy Sullivan. I live at two fourteen Forest Ave. I'm, it was a little late, I apologize, so I missed the part about revenue. And it sounds like revenue increased a bit.
Yes.
Can you explain to me how much and where it came from?
Yes.
I apologize for having you repeat yourselves.
No, I don't think you, I don't think you're making me repeat myself.
We're happy to see you're still paying attention to us.
Right, isn't it?
So the major draws um or increases in revenue came from um excise tax. We're registering more vehicles, um which is part of the, is part of what is drawing um on staff time quite a bit. So that was up seventy thousand dollars projected. State revenue sharing was up twenty-two thousand dollars. Homestead and Betty, those um, those calculations, we lose a little more value, but we gain revenue on that side. The big one, um ambulance revenue is up. We projected a twenty thousand dollar increase in ambulance revenue, so that was um fairly substantial. And a sixty-three um thousand dollar increase in investment earnings. Um the, the bank has um increased our interest rate substantially. So those are kind of the, not any one huge increase Judy, but lots of pieces.
So one of the things that's always concerned us is in it, if we, we get more coming, money coming in, we always seem to find a way to spend it. And, and I underneath, I understand and appreciate the need for staff, but sometimes it's very frustr- frustrating because those, once they come on board, then you're caught in those compounding increases that happen every year in terms of particularly benefits, much less any merit raises or et cetera. So it kind of concerns me and it sounds like some of those incomes that are coming in, uh excise tax, for example, that may be, that's something that could fluctuate quite dramatically, I would suspect. And does it fa- does it, is there a pattern to this? Is it something that every four or five years you see this increase because people get new vehicles? Or is it something that happened because that many people moved into town and then we're gonna have this income year after year? You know, I just, I, I'm not in a position to go beyond commenting. It just seems to me, as I said, we get more money coming in and we find a way to spend it. And, and uh I'm wondering how long we can continue to do this. And it bothers me pred- predominantly because of that mill rate that we're looking at. It, I, I do think it has, it, it could have negative impacts in terms of people choosing to live here. And I would suspect it would have definite, definitely negative impacts on businesses thinking of moving here. So I, I admire you all for all of it. I haven't missed a moment of that.
So, so Judy, I, I actually made a note in my book at the, the slide that came up with the, the added staff members because I anticipated that you would make that very point.
Myself or others?
That you personally would make that point, but that other people would perhaps be wondering the same thing. And the note that I made here is of these four employees that we um have entertained adding in this budget, two of them, Public Works and the paramedic firefighter, are directly related to safety concerns that, that we're having in those departments. And, and that seems to be a deal breaker. Um the part-time library clerk, some of the projections we saw for not adding staff or cutting staff in that department would mean cutting things that the community loves like children's programming, which is not something I don't, I think any of us wanted to do. And finally, the assessing clerk, um perhaps you could see that as something that was negotiable, but really, we're not getting the maximum value out of a valuable employee if we don't provide some support for that employee for clerical work. So um I appreciate, and I knew, I knew that that would be a concern that a lot of people would have, but that you specifically would have. And um, you know, when we talk about this being a responsible budget, we were, we were, we were not trying to, to make any grand additions now that we got a little extra cash. We, we really, there, there were some significant gaps in the service level and so we were trying to, to, to address those.
If I just could um add to what you said about the assessing, it's also a different model Judy. In the past, we have hired a full-time assessor and kept that assessor here at significant cost. With the new model, we're actually sharing an assessor with multiple communities and um paying for the clerical person to be able to do the clerical work. So we're actually able to contract that assessor out to three other communities right now. Once the revale is done, the plan would be to add another community and bring that um revenue back up into the thirty, about thirty thousand dollars a year. So you're um probably right about where you were when we hired a full-time assessor that just stayed here. But good question.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'm Frederica Smith and I live at Eight Chestnut Court. And I have two comments. One is that we have watched the budget process yearly since we moved here five years ago and I continue to be impressed with the amount of work that the staff, all the department chairs, um all their support people and the council put in on this budget, scrutinizing every single line. I think it really makes an enormous difference in our confidence as a community in the services that are provided for the money that we pay. Um the, the second um thing is that I commend you for somehow managing in spite of inflation that's at, what, two point six percent or something, coming in for the municipalities' portion of this budget at only a one point zero nine percent increase. That's impressive. That is not an increase in expenditure from my perspective in, in comparison to the inflation rate.
Thank you, Frederica. Anyone else wish to comment?
I, I just wanna add one thing, uh when Sophie explained the universities' portion and that they do make a contribution as well. Just as a matter of perspective, my four-year-old had walked all over campus today. She went to the climbing facility, she went to CCA, she went to the Anthropology Museum. Um she went to the Center for Climate Change. She FaceTimed me and told me that she wants to go out and be able to dig fossils someday. I just hope I'm not one of them. But she, she goes to the CCA, she goes to the Nutcracker, it's all in her backyard. It's walkable distance for her. So I think that's something else that maybe isn't showing up. I'd, I'd, I'd love to see it come in, in dollars, but I love that we have what we do here. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. All right, hearing no other comments, I will close.
Close by.
I do think it's important also with that fifty percent that you're looking at to recognize that that's not all the university, by the way. That's a very important thing to consider. And I think we have a tendency to kind of whack, you know, kind of fluff over this, this huge percentage of our, of our, you know, property that's, that's not taxable. But those other nonprofits, uh when it comes to land, there's more land acreage in conservation than the, than the university has for land. So those are all things that play into that picture. I think people need to understand that also.
Uh Stuart Dexter on Three Friendwood Street. The discussions have been going on and I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'd disappoint the council if I didn't get up here and say something. I appreciate the town manager, uh probably offsetting my list of towns in Maine that have lesser tax rates than Orno. And the last I looked, Orno was third among twenty towns in the community of all uh types of population, uh tax-free nonprofit type. I mean Prescott's got a university there, Fort Ken has a university, Farmington has a university. They all have the nonprofit, uh they got their churches and so forth. So uh just to say one thing, probably in another couple of meetings of the council, you'll get my top twenty list again. And there's two or three new councilors that weren't here when I gave my last one out. And so they, they lost out on that information. But I shall keep reminding the town council where Orno stands with their tax rate. Lot of different things affect it. But you still have Augusta that has a lot of tax exempt property and their tax rate's less than ours. Bangor's is less than ours, although they just went up quite high, so I'm not sure. The other thing I have been thinking about too is the school takes a lot of our tax money. And I'm just wondering if the council wouldn't get together, maybe they do, and say, geez, school board, you're killing us on the tax rate. Yours is going up this much and we're holding ours down as we can because just offset uh something. But I would think, uh I'd like to see the, the council in total go to the school board and, and say, hey, guys, you're, you're killing us on the tax rate. Now I don't know what this thing is tomorrow, that we're voting on their budget or something, which is new, I think. I don't, that's happened before. I never missed a vote, but I must have missed that one. So anyway, I, I'd never seen in the 50-odd years I worked in Orono, a tax rate that I liked here. And one thing about it that's consistent, it's always going up. And I'd like to see a council come in sometime and say, we're going to hold the tax rate even. Not to cut it, but just keep it the same. And I think that's happened a few times in the distant future. But, anyway, I...
So Stuart, I think your desires are ones that I see many counselors doing this with, yes. And I think one of the things that council needs to hear from residents is what it is they don't want us to do. Because every service that we look at potentially trying to pull back in order to save money, I, we have to stop doing things. And people get upset when we stop doing things. So I think if we're reaching a point where the mill rate is going to exceed what people are willing to pay, then the feedback that they need to give council isn't just, it's too high, but rather, what is it that you don't want? Do you not want a pool? Do you not want the library open full-time? Do you not want the town office open? You know, what are the things that residents would be willing to do without?
If I may reply, that's sort of a good idea, but it's dangerous. A number of years ago, I complained that the, not our current Public Works person, but one prior, had a vehicle, town vehicle, all paid for. He commuted 30 miles or so to, to work every day. And I complained about this. And they said, well, he needs it in case of an emergency. How many emergencies have happened the last year? One? Now, to me, there's no problem in providing a vehicle for someone. I think they could get a cheaper one. Now, I, I don't know what the story is now. He might be driving a Cadillac, and he might be driving a, I don't know what. And I'll also bring up, this is having 50-odd years living in Orono, you get a lot of things way back. This one's way back. Parks and Recreation Director was using his own pickup truck. And he came to the council and said, I'd like to have the council buy a vehicle for me, a pickup truck. And he said, I found one for $400. And the councils, you know, they're all smiling. They bought him a brand-new one. Came to $4,000. This is 40 years ago, when we had a part-time.
I think Mitch is still using that truck, by the way.
Well, if he is, I say all the power to him. But anyway, you mentioned that to get comments from the public, it's very difficult to come here and say, well, our, our street doesn't plow well. Or, we need this, or we need that. And I'll just give you one more story. Problem with living here for so long, getting so old, you start talking. But anyway. Another year, I complained, I, I presented a budget, a cut in the budget. And again, not our current public director. The chairman, the chairman said, what would happen if this budget that he's presented came and you had this cut? And he said, well, people wouldn't get their streets plowed. That was, so, that's what, that didn't go over very well, my suggestion. But anyway, that winter, for some reason, when the snowplow came by, most of that snow on the street ended up in my driveway. And I'll tell you, those, it was six, seven, eight feet high. Now, I'm not saying there was anything regarding my, my budget, but it seemed awful strange. I had a lot of snow. So, anyway, that's my comments. But it is very difficult for people to come up and say, I don't think we should have this, or we should...
Sure.
I'm concerned about the Little League pack. I don't know what they're going to do. But, again, being here for so long, I can recall the National Guard came in and rebuilt the Little League field. And some people say, well, it's way out of town. We ought to have it downtown. We should have it here or there. So, again, it's hard to come into complaint. But, I always end up doing it.
Stuart, if I may, I have two pieces of, of information for you that I think you'll find relevant. The first is, you, you mentioned sort of the, the wish that the school board and that we would sit down with the school board and talk to them. And we have been doing that. We actually, the last two years, have instituted a formal policy of getting together before budget season really gets steaming along. And we meet and we talk about what our projections are, what we're looking at. This year, we had a very productive conversation where they were in the same boat as, as we are. They, they were, they were looking at a very kind of responsible, perhaps even conservative, budget. The reason that you're seeing such an increase in how much the, the town has to cover has to do with the state recalculated formula for how much we're responsible for. So, it's not the RSU's kind of fault for creating a bigger, more, you know, more exorbitant budget, but rather, the calculation of what we owe for that budget. But, but rest assured that we are meeting every year to, specifically to talk about our budgets and kind of give each other a preview of the, of the things that we're looking at. The second thing that I think you'll find very interesting, and I'm sure Sophie would love to give you a copy of this, she made this amazing spreadsheet for us at our request that showed tax commitments, mill rates, changes, state revenue sharing, all of these, these little bits of information from 2006 to this, to the current projected 2019, or 2019. And you said, every year, the taxes have gone up. That's the one consistent, right? I'm actually going to tell you that's not correct. Because when I look at this sheet, what I notice is in 2006, the mill rate was 2310. And by 2009, there was a significant drop to 1970. And the reason for this drop probably had to do with the fact that our state revenue sharing was $1.3 million back then. And the, the mill rate started to increase, not steadily, but alarmingly perhaps, around the time that our state revenue sharing dropped in two, in 13, from 1.1, for almost $1.2 million, down to $865,000. So, that is an interesting statistic, that some of our mill rate increases and decreases also seem to be connected to some state revenue sharing increases and decreases. But, I'm sure Sophie would be happy to, to give this, you'll like this a lot.
I'd be happy to look at it, and I will probably criticize something on it.
And Stuart, I'd like to just, I'd, I'd like to just add that Rob Yerxa is not driving a Cadillac.
Well, I found that out. He just said he's still driving the one they bought back in 1960.
Well, that's Public Works, but our, our Public Works director is not driving a Cadillac either.
I will, I will tell you one thing. I mentioned Public Works. I think he's doing a great job. I really do. Main Street in the wintertime is great. The only problem with that, you think all the other streets are just as great, but Main Street is great. And I've called a number of times on things, and before I hang up, I find out that it's been corrected. He's, he's out there now correcting that. So, he's got 110% of my support for it. He's doing a great job.
Well, thank you very much, Stuart.
Even if he is driving a no car.
Anyone else wish to comment? Hearing none, I will cup, I will, did you want to come? I will close public hearing D and open public hearing C to discuss the sewer rate increase for FY 2019, effective July 1, 2018.
So the, our process requires that we have a public hearing on a sewer rate increase. I think we went through the reason for that increase in the last public hearing. I don't know if there's more information that people would like.
Sophie, you gave us a wonderful little chart about where we fell in the region. Do you have anything like that, or could you give us a quick?
I can tell you that we have the lowest sewer user fees in the region. And I think the next highest was almost a dollar more per cubic hundred cubic feet than, than we are.
Thank you. Hearing nothing more from Sophie, I will ask if any public has a comment on the increase in public, in the sewer rate. Hearing no one, I'll close public hearing and move on to public hearing E to accept comments on proposed FY 2018, 2019 fee schedule. Sophie, do you have anything on that?
So, that's me again. This is my night, I suppose. So, we have a fee schedule that has just about every fee that the town would charge. And every year, we go through and we make changes to that fee schedule. This year, we have very limited changes, so I thought I would just review the changes with you. The pool rental is increasing. For up to 25 people, for a resident, it's going from $55 an hour to $75 an hour. And for a non-resident, it's going from $55 an hour to $150 an hour. And the reason that we're doing that is to show that the taxpayers are subsidizing, or not subsidizing, but pay for the pool. And therefore, if you're not a non-resident and you want to rent the pool, you should have to pay more. The thing that is driving the increase is the minimum wage increase. We have not raised, we didn't last year when the minimum wage went up. This year, it's going up again, and we need to, we need to calculate for that. Extra lifeguards used to be $10 an hour, and now it's $15 an hour for a resident. So, if you're going to rent the pool and you need additional people, then you're going to have to pay $15 an hour for each resident, for each lifeguard if you're a resident, $30 if you're a non-resident. Rado, the summer camp, is going from $135 a week to $140 per week, and from $35 a day to $38 a day. We've talked about the sewer fees. And then, the only other change this year is advertising space in the Observer. So, Nancy does an amazing job getting the Observer out to the residents four times a year. We have, we sell, she sells advertising in that, which almost pays for the cost of doing, sending the Observer out. But, what we were, what we are proposing is effective December 1, 2018. An eighth-page ad would go from $45 to $50. A quarter-page ad would go from $90 to $100. And a half-page ad would go from $180 to $200. So, the thought being, we've been able to add pages into the Observer and trying to make it a useful tool for folks who might not want to hop on the internet to know what's going on in town. The only other thing that is, has, would, might potentially change are ambulance fees. If you recall, the, the council has stated that we should be charging the customary fees provided by Atlantic Partners or Maine EMS, one of the over... And we, we do that, but they change from time to time. And that is something that the fire chief would approve with the billing company to stay on that trajectory where council has asked them to stay.
Thank you, Sophie. Does anyone wish to comment on the change in the fee schedule? So, our minimum wage payment will be $15 an hour now?
No, we're a little bit above minimum wage. I think we're at $10.50 right now for a $10 minimum wage. And when it changes, wage is, will go up to $11.50. We like to stay a little bit ahead of minimum wage. But, on top of that, we also have taxes and that have to be paid.
Right. Hearing no one wanting to make a comment, I will close public hearing E and move on to public hearing F to review the Orono Village Center District Development Program.
Hi, good evening, folks. I'm still Dave Mylan, the Director of Community Development. And each year, the council is asked to set a special assessment for a tax rate for properties in the Village Commercial District. The last couple of years, you have, staff has recommended and the, and the council has supported a $0.00 assessment rate. And that will be the same this year as well. But, the thing that's a little bit different this year is that the town's attorney has advised us, though even though that we're recommending a, and the council may consider adopting a $0.00 assessment, that we need to have a public hearing and to provide information on what our development plan is. So I want to real briefly give you the proposed development plan for this year or two. We will continue to use the funds from this program to partner with University Maine and some of the school, the complexes, student home complexes, to provide the free shuttle service that's been in operation since August of 2009. There are no activities proposed for this year that will require environmental controls. And the focus for the FY 1819, the town of Orono will continue to fund and organize and support the Orono Summer Concert Series, yay. The winter festival activities and group marketing collaboration with UMaine Athletics and Orono Businesses. And I will stand prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Does anyone have any comments in the public?
Thank you very much.
Questions? No? Anybody on council have any questions for Dave before he sits down? No? Hearing none, I will close public hearing F and move on to public hearing G. Implementation assessments to be assessed against real and personal property for the municipal development district located in the downtown area known as the Village Center Tax District. All right, so it's zero?
Zero. We are recommending zero.
All right. Anyone wish to comment on the zero? None? She's making sure. All right, I will close public hearing. Sure.
So, there used to be an assessment on property. And that was, the money was used for the Orono Village Association? Is that how?
Correct.
And the reason it was suspended, and then the dues, or whatever the assessment is suspended, is because it, the goal is to change? I mean, he just rattled off that. It sounded lovely, but I'm just trying to catch what's... I don't, I, because I'm new on the, the council, and I didn't do what these wonderful citizens do, which is to come to the meeting to listen intently. So I'm listening now, and I would love to know what the, a little bit about the history, about how we got to where we are.
My understanding is that prior to the implementation of the tax increment financing district, one way to be able to gain, gather money, to be able to be used within the village district was to create a village district, which is a taxing entity. In the seven years that I, when I first came here seven years ago, that netted us about $8,000 a year. Most all of that went back, huh? Most all of that went back in some form or fashion to either directly... Most all of that went back in some form or fashion to either directly to OVA or as a match for work that OVA was doing. And so, it paid for things. At one point, there was a dedicated individual who, part-time employee, who picked up trash in downtown. Then there was somebody who shoveled sidewalks, and we have kind of just incorporated that in with the rest of our activities. But along with, so with the TIF district, we have money allocated, sheltered for the purpose of being able to do a lot of those same things. And it seemed kind of unnecessary to tax businesses and residents living in a district for services that we were funding through other means anyway. And then, when we bought the new software, financial software, we learned that we could not tax a Village Commercial Tax District without spending nine thousand dollars to write code. And it seemed pretty ludicrous to fund nine thousand dollars to write code to collect eight thousand dollars that we could find in an alternative manner, method. So, a couple of years ago, we decided to recommend that we not tax the fifty cents per thousand dollars of value. And we left it at zero. And although it seems kind of like a, an exercise, what we have heard from the town attorney is if we allow the village district to go and not continue to have it, have a plan, make an affirmative decision on how we're going to assess or levy the tax, then in the future, when we decide there's another purpose to have a special district, even if it's not for taxation, we would be in a position of having to do it all over again, which is very, very expensive. So, that's why we go through this process.
I love it that you have this great, you just condensed the story, and it sounds so wise what's being done. So, thank you. But then, a little bit more history, which is when did we start having a TIF? The Tax Increment Financing, what?
No. I was here in two thousand eleven, and it was already a TIF.
Two thousand eleven.
Okay.
So, and then, sorry, the, one more thing, which is, can you give me an example? It sounds like a great idea to keep it going so that we wouldn't have to reconstitute it at a future time. What are examples of ways, maybe Evan, you know this from working at the state level, of ways that village associations might, besides this, what, in the past, gathering money to do services just in that area? What are other ways that towns use that to the benefit of the town and to the business and owners in, in that village district?
Yes, where these districts exist, in a number of the larger cities, they exist. And they're used for very, often for very strong marketing purposes. Joint marketing, basically, for the businesses downtown and for the financing of events, such as the concert series. And for funding some infrastructure and public works types of services that might not otherwise get the attention they would, without these funds.
I think one of the important components of this is that a Tax Increment Financing District, which has, which is the mechanism that we're using for this, does not have an unending life. So, there will be a period of time that council's gonna have to decide whether to renew it or how to renew it. And the thought being, if we didn't have the TIF, is very, there is a possibility that businesses, groups would want to have that mechanism of self-tax to be able to do the things that we're doing with the TIF right now.
So, is there, the money that was collected in the past, that's been spent, right? There's nothing like, there's no reserve being held because of dues that were paid in, or, excuse me, assessments that were paid in previous years?
No, I think the village association might have, what, about forty thousand dollars on hand? But we don't have any, we've spent out our allocation. We don't have any funds on reserve.
So, that, the board of the village association still has that ability to spend that money? And they don't have to check with the town? That's in their own account? Cool.
All right. With that, I will close public hearing G. And move on to public hearing H. Ordinance Amendments to the Town of Orano ordinances related to property maintenance, Chapter Eight Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three Housing Code, Section Eight dash fifty-two definitions, Section Eight dash ninety-seven Open Areas, Section Eight dash ninety-eight Buildings and Structures, Chapter Eighteen Land Use, Article Nine, excuse me, Article Four Zoning Districts, Section Eighteen dash one oh eight Corner Clearance, and Article Fifteen, Article Five, my Roman numerals are tough. Performance Standards, Section Eighteen dash one forty-nine Domesticated Chickens. And with that, Evan, tell us about chickens.
Chickens I know nothing about. This is something that the council with Dave Mylan and Sophie worked with Jana Richards on when Jana was here. And she last, she met with you before she departed to her new position in Bar Harbor. She met with the Council Committee on Conference Planning in April and reviewed this with you. You had a few comments and suggestions for changes, which have been incorporated into this draft. So, I'll do my best to fill in. The, this is something that was recommended in the conference of plan, that there be some attention to enhanced property maintenance standards for particularly residential properties. But only to the extent that they relate to health, safety, and welfare. This was not a matter of aesthetics or taste, that sort of thing, as might be found in some communities around the property maintenance or historic preservation ordinances. This was aimed at health and safety and welfare needs that were perceived to be sometimes neglected in, in at least some residential properties around town. We now, it's important to note that the town does have a housing code, i.e. relation to residential development. There are a whole bunch of performance standards in that code. And our code enforcement officer uses those standards frequently to look at situations. So, this is not carved out of new, this is not carved out new. It is an incremental strengthening of several standards and, and making clearer some of the language in the ordinance for enforceability. Because sometimes, there are very few definitions, and the language is general, and that causes gray areas. And this tries to close up some of those gray areas. So, one section of the amendment simply is definitions. And adds a good number of definitions. When you say deterioration, what do you mean? When you say anchored, well anchored, what do you mean? When you say exterior, external space, or yard area, what do you mean? So, all those things are now laid out in more detail than in the present, than in the present ordinance. There's no policy changes there, it's just definitions. The second amendment has to do with external property. I should note that all the amendments here deal just with external areas of the property, accessory structures or outbuildings of the property, or possible impacts on adjacent properties as a result of drainage or the harboring of rodents or that sort of thing. And so, this section is kind of the heart of the amendment. The section, which is the amendments to Section Eight dash ninety-seven of the Housing Code, in which it addresses surface and subsurface drainage. Most of these things already are addressed in some general way in the current code. It's enhancing those or making clear what, what is meant by them. And so, under surface and subsurface drainage, the, the standard now includes making sure that stormwater is diverted away from the residential, the dwelling, so as not to cause deterioration of that dwelling. But also managed in a way that does not impact neighboring private or public property. So, some onsite kinds of management things may be necessary. It addresses, I'm gonna just hit some of the highlights. It addresses what had been called noxious undergrowth. Now, it's called weeds detrimental to health. But this, these are the, those plants that can cause rashes or blisters or poison ivy or cow parsnip, and the things that are indigenous to our neck of the woods and that if exposed, some people become ill or, like my wife, she wouldn't mind me saying, but really allergic to poison ivy. But anyway, so this, this requires management of noxious weeds if it's near the property lines of either the public ways or private property lines. It talks about removal of trees that are in a hazardous condition. It directly addresses the harborage of vermin. And vermin is now a defined term in the ordinance. And it requires the removal of vermin that are, if they're infesting a site and taking the precautions so that they will not be, the site will not be reinvested. So, those are the kind of substantive things in, in the amendment here. A third amendment addresses and expands the, the meaning of habitable space, particularly with respect, it's not just, it's not, it's not just, you know, the roofs and the foundation and the, the walls of the principal building, but now also relates to accessory structures because as the council members noted in committee meetings, accessory structures can be used as habitable space, whether it's as an accessory apartment or an Airbnb, a bedroom, or whatever. So, that's now covered as habitable space that has to be free of deterioration or structural problems. And finally, the amendment has to do with the keeping of chickens. As you know, the town amended the ordinances several years ago to allow a certain number of chickens to be kept within the neighborhoods of the community. There have been some issues with respect to predators and rodents and insects and parasites being present or infesting an area where the, the chickens have not been well managed. And so, there is a section in the land use ordinance, because that's where this piece of, of the ordinance exists, that requires prompt removal of those, that kind of life, if it's, if it's infesting, that kind of infestation. And in almost all these cases, it also, each, it clarifies the kind of notice of violation, if there is such a violation, that the code enforcement officer is authorized and shall issue. So, there's a, tries to clarify the enforcement procedures as well. I think that's the sum and substance of it.
Great. Thank you very much, Evan. Does anyone in the public wish to comment?
I know. Could remember my regular glasses, too. Joe, cool. Judy Sullivan, two fourteen forest app. My concern is about remedy. It's not mentioned specifically. I mean, we talk about fines, I assume. What happens when a person is, is found in violation, when they find? And most of our fines appear to be, you know, continued by the day, if you don't belly up initially by the day. And if they accumulate and are not paid, does that become a lien on a property? And does that lien ever get to a point where it justify foreclosure proceedings?
It does not accumulate to a lien. And, but it could, depending on the council's desire, end up with a writ of execution where if you went through the entire court proceeding to get a judge to enter a writ of execution, which is essentially the, an ability for the town to go in and mitigate its loss through the sale of, of items that are owned. I, I have not gone through the writ of execution process here. I know the town did once before. We still have a writ against somebody with a seventy thousand dollar fine. I don't know what council, what information council had at its fingertips when they decided to push that. But it doesn't seem indicative of the council we have today. And I know exactly what your concern is, Judy, around the remedy, being if somebody has a problem and they don't have the funds to fix it, then are we just gonna come, compound the issue? And I hear what you're saying with that.
I, I guess the thing that, that concerns me is once you codify something like this, then there is no individual treatment. There is no individual consideration. You know, and, and, and I'll be very honest with you, when I think about this, I think about my father. And you guys had a heyday. And I, I think back, and I'm very grateful that nobody knocked on my father's door that, you know, thought it to be a good Samaritan and was concerned about things. Things happen very quickly with, sometime with people when they get into a demented state, and you, you can lose track of things. And I just think, to me, that part of remedy bothers me more than anything else. And I think that it's really important for the council and everybody to recognize that we have an aged population here in this town. I think if you take away those eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, our aged population is the biggest piece of our population. And I, I, I see these things happening. I, I know my neighbors. I know, you know, on the streets where I've lived for years, and I see those conditions happening. So, that part of remedy bothers me. I understand the need for having something that's enforceable. I, I still have real concerns about, you know, this whole thing, but I'm not gonna argue about that part. What I would be very concerned about is what your remedy is, and it's a remedy that you would be willing to enforce on some elderly person that didn't have the capacity to make the change. So, think, that's my concern.
Thank you, Judy. We will keep that in mind. I will say that we're not voting on this this evening. So, if there is someone listening that has a comment that would like to send it to council, council is, is really looking for some public feedback on this. We are, you know, we really want to make sure we're going in the right direction. So, we'd appreciate any comments. With that, I will close public hearing H. And move on to acknowledgements by council members. And if there's any way I could ask someone to turn the air on before. I will start down with Cheryl.
Can you acknowledge the weather? I'd like to say thank you to the weather. No, I'm looking forward to, to summer events. That's all. I'm glad to say goodbye to winter. Megan?
Yes, first, I would like to acknowledge the athletes and their family, friends, and supporters at the Special Olympics this past weekend. I had the pleasure of attending the opening ceremony. And boy, everyone was really excited and had a lot of spirit. And I know that, that they worked really hard to, to arrive here this weekend. And it's a wonderful event in our town, so it was, if you haven't been, I would say go. The parade was really fun. My daughter had a lot of fun at, at the parade. She's like, why is Elmo here? This is the best thing. In any case. I, I couldn't. In any case, I, I couldn't answer that question, he just is. So, I also want to acknowledge that between Arts of Palooza and Pride, and I'm not going to talk about either of those things to any great extent, because I'm sure other councillors might want to mention them as well. But we're going to have a really wild kind of week in this Bangor, Orno metroplex. So, I'm really looking forward to all of the, the spirit and the fun and the events coming up.
Thank you, Megan. Tom, do you have any?
Well, I also am glad to see the trees all leaf out and everything turning green. And all the efforts by, by all the individuals to make, make things look nice. Plus, the beautification committee's done another fine job of all the flowers and the upkeep of them.
Thank you. Tom?
We talked a lot about budgets tonight. And I would like to acknowledge our town manager and our department heads and all of our staff who've worked very hard to put a budget together, to sit with us for many hours as we reviewed it with them. I really appreciate all the hard work that went into it.
Thank you, Tom. Lori?
I'd like to acknowledge Operation Breaking Stereotypes. It's, it's, it's the mission of Operation Breaking Stereotypes is to connect groups of students to explore identity and break stereotypes related to race, ethnicity, religion, gender, and class. For the past three years, students from Orno Middle School, Leonard Middle School, and Indian Island School have been working together to connect different cultures and backgrounds, leaving stereotypes behind. They visited each other's schools and learned about their communities, the cultures represented there, and how they might help share this understanding with others. This year, these students decided to focus on school safety and gun violence, an issue that affects all of their communities. With this sense, with this issue at their core, they also participated in the Samantha Smith Challenge, an initiative of Americans Who Tell the Truth and M-A-M-L-E that encourages students to become courageous and engaged citizens. What's M-A-M-L-E? Main Association of Middle Level Education. They first created a school safety survey. They administered to all students in each of the schools. They also realized that they and others needed to learn about how gun violence has affected communities and schools around our country. So they focused on learning about school shootings that have occurred since nineteen ninety-nine with more than four fatalities. They created an online map to represent the details of the tragedies, to put a face on these disasters. They also chose to feature an informal bio of one victim from each of those schools. So they also, finally, they reflected on the following statements. When I look to the past, I still see. I will not be satisfied until I see, and I have a dream of that. So this, Operations Breaking Stereotypes, I learned about it from Connie Carter, an Orno resident. And so she gave me this mission statement so I could read it out into the record, because I'm really impressed with our community and the interesting things that we do that are above and beyond the general curriculum. And that really encourage our students to be citizens in society and address issues that are of importance that when they grow up and become city and councillors and elected officials, they might be able to address. So there's two, two triptics over there that students made. So before you leave tonight, if you have a chance to look at them, and you can also go online and look at their map.
Thank you, Lori. Sam?
I agree. A few things, first of all, vote tomorrow. You can see all this fun stuff behind us here. I can't believe it made it all the way down to me before somebody said that. Well, you left a few. So vote tomorrow, that's really important, obviously. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Orno High School for graduation this past weekend, last night. That's very exciting. I don't know the number of students, but great to see that. Ninety-six, thank you, Lori. Also, sort of a larger category, item three, yes, the arts are huge here. They're doing great. This past weekend, Orno Middle School did Seussical Junior, which was great. Three performances of that. I sat through every one of them. It was a long weekend. Arts of Palooza, this coming Saturday, June twen-, June sixteenth. There are schedules out and about. Also, some theater company is performing Hand to God, starting this weekend and next weekend. Don't Bring the Kids, that is not a family show, but it's, it's a great theater piece. True North Theater, at the Cyrus Pavilion, is performing Table Manners. And then I think it's July twenty-sixth, Lori, we have theater at the library. July twenty-sixth, we have Ten Buck Theater doing the Scottish play, Macbeth, I'll say it. I think that's about it, so the, the arts are alive and well here.
Great.
I'm done.
Thank you very much, Sam. I would just like to acknowledge Kyle Drexler, our new planner. For all of you that haven't met him, he's, we've got him busy already. Moving on to the unfinished business, we don't have any. Consent agenda, I will take a motion to move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any conversation? No. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. Order eighteen ninety-one, order reallocating a portion of the remaining approved FY eighteen capital budget, Penobscot Street Infrastructure Project Funds to the following projects. Capital Public Works Equipment and Westwood Drive interim pavement. I will take a motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Rob, the very nice gentleman.
Good evening, Rob Yerkes, Public Works Director. So the project that we just finished on Penobscot Street had about forty thousand dollars budgeted for this current fiscal year. With the project complete, we had a balance of about twenty-seven thousand dollars left. And so, with that, we are suggesting that we address a few needs that have come up during the fiscal year that we didn't budget for. The largest one would be to place a temporary pavement surface on Westwood Drive. Westwood Drive is scheduled in two or three years for a larger project. But we're concerned that the section between Main Street and the back entrance to the high school may not make it that long. So, we're suggesting to do a similar treatment that we did on Forest Avenue. We'll simply create a new pavement surface so that we can maintain it. It'll be safer and smoother to travel. That's about fifteen thousand dollars. Also, we're proposing two equipment purchases. One is a utility trailer. As our mowing fleet has grown a bit, particularly the pieces of equipment that we need to haul around town, we've noticed that our trailers are a little undersized. This will be a little bit larger trailer to help us move all those pieces of equipment around town as we work through our day. And the second piece is a hay mulcher. So, whenever we disturb earth, we need to make sure that we put mulch on top of that, once we're finished for the day, to prevent erosion. And it also is used in seeding applications, once the project is complete. And the hay mulcher will help spread that hay more efficiently and be more effective as well.
Thank you, Rob.
And that's about forty-five hundred dollars.
Councillors have any questions? Nope. And you're going to repurpose one of our older trailers?
Yes, the trailer that we're using now to move our mowing equipment, we'll actually mount that hay mulcher on that trailer so that it'll travel with it, it'll be one unit. We'll put the hay on the trailer and then use the mulcher altogether, so.
Great. There's no questions from council? I will ask for a vote on Order eighteen ninety-one. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Order eighteen ninety-two, order authorizing the town manager to execute an easement across town-owned property located on Godfrey Drive and described on the Town of Orno Assessor's map as Map eleven, Lot forty-four, with said easement being fifty feet wide and connecting Godfrey Drive to the parcel currently known as Map eleven, Lot thirty-eight. I'll take a motion, please.
Move approval?
Second.
So the area that we currently know as the main technology park was actually developed as two separate subdivisions. The piece we're talking about right now is what was developed by the town as Research and Development Park, which is up, it's the upper side that would come off Stillwater. The lot that currently holds the Nextlinks, the former Nextlinks Building with the parking lot behind it, so it's an odd-shaped lot, has, was originally owned by the town. There is a lot that abuts that, where the pond is currently, that now abuts Godfrey Drive, that was also owned by the town. So when the town developed that, they developed it writing on its parcels, right on the map, it shows a fifty-foot easement. However, when some work was done to work, to look at splitting one of the lots for future development, what the surveyors found was that while it was all over the original documents that went to Planning Board and the site plan that was subsequently filed at the Registry of Deeds, since the town owned both lots, it never went through the formal process of conveying an easement, because you can't really convey an easement to yourself to travel over land you already own. So, this was something I hadn't run into before. The town ordinance very clearly says if we are going to dispose of property or property rights, or any kind of interest in property, we need to have a public hearing first, before we can do that. This came up after the public hearing was noticed. So, I sent it, I picked up the phone and talked to our town attorney and said, it was on all of these maps, couldn't we say that the town knew about it back then? I mean, I think everybody's intent is for this easement to, to be granted. And what he found was that council didn't follow its process when it deeded the property to out-of-the-town ownership. And I think it went, there was a chain there, it went several places. But, and they didn't hold a public hearing at that point to validate the easement across. However, it's been on every map and actually has been on the town maps for quite a while. So what he found is that it would not require a public hearing to grant an easement if it is determined by a unanimous vote of the town council that the easement does not unreasonably burden the town's property or have an undue negative impact on the town's property or other properties in the immediate area. His words were, given the circumstances, this provision seems tailor-made for the current situation. So, I am bringing this to you without public hearing, but with the advice from the town attorney that upon a unanimous vote of council, you could authorize me to grant the easement, and it would be in keeping with our ordinance.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Nope, makes good sense. I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. So you may go forth and create an easement. Order eighteen ninety-three, order authorizing the borrowing, bower, yeah. Borrowing, my Rhode Island accent coming in. Of up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the First National Bank with a repayment starting after July one, two thousand nineteen, for a period of up to three years at an interest rate not to exceed three point four one percent for the purpose of purchasing a new Holder municipal sidewalk tractor and further to authorize the town manager and town council chairperson to execute any documents necessary to secure the loan. Take a motion, please.
Move approval?
Second.
Are you doing it? He's coming. All right, he's got his book.
So as you know, we have been working to improve our fleet of sidewalk machines to hopefully meet the service level that is expected by the community and the council. Over the last few years, four years, we've purchased two smaller machines to help bolster the response to sidewalk clearing in the wintertime, hoping that our, our current Holder would be able to stay in operation for a few years so that we could work it into the capital plan. So we made it through this winter. And unfortunately, just at the very end of, just as we began to start our sweeping season, we had some pretty significant mechanical failures with the machine. It is a nineteen ninety-five Holder with many, many hours of blowing snow primarily, but a lot of use, and is integral to our sidewalk clearing response. This machine has a very high, it's a ninety horsepower machine that has a very high output blower that allows us to clear a lot of sidewalk pretty quickly. And augmented by our other two machines, allows us to have a pretty, pretty quick response to most any size storm. Without the Holder, there would be a significant decrease in our service level for clearing sidewalks. This is a case where it's not necessarily people, but the right piece of equipment with, with people really allows us to, to keep up with that service level requirement that we want to provide to the community. So, after the failure of the Holder, we looked at a few different options. There was a pretty significant investment to repair the existing Holder without the confidence that the repairs would hold up for another winter, or certainly not for five. So, sophion with guidance from council, we decided to look at options for new holders. And we received a quote from Chadwick Bay Ross for about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a new machine that will have a high-output blower and a dump body that will certainly replace the existing machine and be of an improvement from what we have had in the past.
So when we looked at purchasing options, we look, I called around for quotes on loans. The First National Bank was low. For a three-year note, they quoted three point two five percent. For a five-year note, they quoted three point four one percent. What we're asking for is going to fall right kind of in the middle of that, because we're asking for three payments, but not starting the first payment for another year. So the first payment would happen in July of twenty twenty. Twenty nineteen, sorry, twenty nineteen. The plan would be, at that point, we have an eighty-eight thousand dollar payment that we're making on, we're making the final eighty-eight thousand dollar payment on the engine this year. So next year, we would look to split and allocate the thirty thousand dollars for the Holder payment and put, sorry, the fifty thousand dollars for the Holder payment and put the remaining in fire truck reserve. It will, I think it's, we can make that up over time. We are behind in fire reserves, but working with Jeff, I think that we can cover that for the three payments that we need to make. And I just want to be clear that for people who have paid attention for a long time to council... Um and I just wanna be cl- clear that for people who have paid attention for a long time to council. Uh sidewalk and sidewalk machines have been something, a bit of a ongoing conversation. And um we had two holder machines, remember, one blew up in flames. And when we got the insurance proceeds, we talked about buying another one. And at that point, the thought was we should go with a smaller machine that was half the cost. And that we would wait until this machine um lived its useful life. And then we would get rid of it and we would have two small machines and we would just live with this significant decrease in. Service on the sidewalk, like super significant. And I think when council made that decision, I think we were all on board with that. But I also know that in the last two years, we have received probably more s- more comments and feedback. About removing snow on sidewalks in the winter than probably any other service that we provide. And um I don't want people to think that council has forgotten the past. I just think people who haven't been involved in conversations will have missed the clear indication that council has received. That we need to maintain the current level of service. And the only way to do that is with the holder.
Comments?
Yes, it's, it bodes well for the new one.
Plus a thousand bucks for selling the old one too.
And isn't one of the issues, there's no longer an ability to buy parts for the nineteen nine?
Well, um they're just getting uh prohibitively expensive um to get and then. We did some searching around, we found some part, you know, part machines that we could get that might have helped us out a little bit. But same situation, those other two are twenty years old too, so.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Rob?
Um if you um approve this order, it would allow us to put. The um request in to order the machine. And then to begin to work with the first to get the loan and this interest rate secured. I'm a little bit nervous because interest rates are starting to climb.
I will take a vote on order eighteen ninety-three, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Forgot ourselves a new sidewalk machine. Order eighteen ninety-four, order authorizing the town manager to dispose of the remains of the nineteen ninety-eight. Holder sidewalk tractor by transferring ownership in its current condition to North Yard. Northland Farms of Turner, Maine for a thousand dollars. They know what current condition it's in. I'm sorry, I should take an order. Sam motioned, I need a second.
Yes, um Northland, uh there, it's an apple orchard, but uh for a while, they were actually a holder dealer. So um they were actually the place that we found the um parts machines that we were looking at. Um and so in that conversation, they said, well, if you wanna get rid of yours. Here's what we could do and they'll take it in in its existing state, which is in several hundred pieces on the floor. We need to get rid of it. Uh it was gonna cost us about a week's labor and probably four or five hundred dollars in parts. Just to get it back together and runnable, so um I think uh this is a pretty good opportunity for us to move on.
Any questions or comments?
So what you're telling us is our our old holder is going to live on a farm.
Going up up the country to live in a farm and he uses holders to maintain his apple orchard, so nice peaceful life.
In pieces, yes. It's getting late, you can tell. I will take a vote on order eighteen ninety-four, please. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Order eighteen ninety-five, order authorizing the town manager to execute in an agreement with Civic Plus. To build and implement the Civic Rec program at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. With funds drawn from the approval F- approved FY eighteen Parks and Recreation Departmental Budget. I'll take a motion, please.
Second.
There we go. Wow, you guys are changing things up. Alright, Mitch has asked if I would kick us off tonight. Currently, all of the back office functions for the Parks and Rec Department, so all of the program registration and facility rental. Um are managed through a cloud-based software system that is called MyRec. It's been, we've had it for the better part of ten, ten years. Staff work, um as staff has been working to um implement departmental priorities. Related to the efficient use of staff time, improving promotion of recreation opportunities. And providing the option of recurring payments, um primarily for the summer day camp, um but could be used for other things as well. The limitations in the MyRec system are really coming to light for us. Civic Plus is a the current, uh the town's current website vendor. Um and it offers a similar recreation program called Civic Rec, imagine that. This software um allows for the same program um registration and facility rental. It allows participants to establish recurring payments. It improves form management through digitization, so right now, everything looks electronic. But on the back office side, it is not, it is not something that we can just store and keep electronically. And manipulate electronically. It integrates with the existing website, which will allow for similar um customization that we have now. And one of the big pieces of that is ease of use. If you look at the website. We are able to um control a lot of how things are put on there, what they look like in um the form. It provides customizable reporting and search functions. That will dramatically decrease the amount of time that staff currently spends reconciling program registration accounts. So right now, everything gets dumped into um MyRec. So um if we have multiple program registrations going on or people buying pool passes and registering for summer camp. And doing something else. Mitch currently has no way of simply running a report that tells him what happened in one. Um revenue group, so he spends hours poring over reports. Because he cannot customize them to search in a, in a way that makes sense. And um they will have um many of the same features as the website. So for example, one of the things that we've been talking about is sending out participant surveys after programs are over. This system has the ability to do that. I mean, I'm sure Mitch has to do some work to make that happen, but it it will eventually happen. Currently, MyRec costs the town approximately forty, four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars a year. The Civic Plus system will cost us um eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to build. And up to three thousand dollars for a data dump. That is necessary to move uh history currently stored on the MyRec system. This quote of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars includes the annual fee for the first year. With subsequent years quoted at four thousand five hundred dollars a year. Staff recommends utilizing the funds remaining in the approved FY eighteen Recreation Departmental Budget. And if you recall, the reason that those funds are remaining is part, we elected not to utilize the part-time person. That was budgeted this year and instead embark on a um pilot program with the university. So that's where those funds are coming from.
Did I forget anything? Any questions or comments from council, Cheryl?
Mitch, how many, about how many participants, you say participants and reconciling payments and all that stuff? How many participants are part of this system in Orono that use this?
So there are roughly four thousand people in the system, accounts-wise. That doesn't mean they're all active. The summer is our biggest usage time with the, with the summer camp going twelve weeks. And our max for that is seventy-five kids total in that per week. And and so we have quite a bit of stuff that goes through in the summer and then you add into it, whether it's pool passes or some of the smaller programs. You know, uh soccer, basketball, you're up to a hundred participants. But part of it is about how it comes in. MyRec is not customizable, so I actually have to run about three different reports and then figure out how to put them together. To to bring it out and the more activity you increase, the bigger challenge that that presents.
So so the majority of that is just the twelve weeks in the summer?
No, it's throughout, it's throughout the, throughout the year, but cause we have other programs going on, I'm just saying that that's the. That is a big, big chunk of it. Wh- when we look at this too, it's also about uh forms, so every time, um especially in the summer. Each week, those forms are printed, physical copies, which they have to go with. So if somebody repeats, they have to go find the reports, bring them back. They're not, eh each week, they have to do that, whether if it's digitized, which this will allow us to do, which MyRec doesn't. It it saves us on that as well.
I'm just wondering about the eleven thousand dollars for for, I don't know how many participants, I mean. When you say participants, I'm I'm thinking families, not the kids that are involved in the programs, but the people who are actually using. The website and using it to register. Right, that, those would be the people that would be participants.
Right, but so every time somebody goes in, so if I, if if one child signs up for four different programs. That's even if it's one parent or one person using it. That's four times that they go through that system and which on the other end has to be reconciled. So it's not just about the upfront user, but it's also about the numbers wise total. I don't know if that helps with that.
I think I can help maybe a little bit. I don't know, Cheryl, you can cut me off at any point. So when you consider that for soccer, we're upwards of a hundred and twenty participants, then we have Starwalk's kids. We have um Starwalk stables and smaller programs. The library has also used the MyRec system to sign people up, so although there is no money, there are those elements. One of the things that I talked about with the um Finance and Operations Committee was a concern that. We do currently have four thousand users and no way to reasonably call them. The way MyRec is set up. So it's really hard, that's why it's hard for us, I can't pinpoint and say there are six hundred discrete users of this in a year. The other piece I would just say is you, there is an upfront fee of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. Dollars. Of that, forty-five hundred is for the first year license fee. So you're really only talking about an additional expense of four. Less than, yeah, four thousand.
Plus the three thousand dollar data dump.
Yeah, we talked about that in um Finance and Operations and I'm not sold on that. But um it's one of those things that if I don't have the authority to do it, when we dig into it. I'm not gonna be able to stop everything to come back and get that authority. And so what we would be looking for there is um. Some communities have migrated off MyRec to things like Civic Plus or Civic Rec. And have been able to maintain back office access to MyRec. And if that, if MyRec would allow us to do that um at no cost. As long as we don't add to it, then I wouldn't do the three thousand dollar data dump. But I do think, especially with um Parks and Rec right now. We need to have the ability to crunch numbers and be able to talk about enrollment and what programs have been offered and. So we're looking at alternatives. I know that Mitch um is gonna work with Bell to see if there's a way that we can just download it. And in a different form, to be able to get that.
How long have we been using MyRec?
Nine, ten years.
Nine, ten years, okay. And at the time, uh I would imagine you weren't here then, but I mean, I imagine at the time, it was like, this is pretty cutting edge and. But then we've grown ten years and so this looks like a different program, different package that will meet. Future needs, which we can't necessarily anticipate right now.
One of the things about MyRec is um that's uh interesting, that's different. Is MyRec, right now, we're at the base level of what we can do. Um it's a base format, it's the lowest level. Um in order to get extra things, that it's à la carte, so you have to pay more to do that. This actually comes into everything that they have, they give you for that price. And any updates you get, it's not like you have to pay more. Uh one of the things that when we, when we went to Civic Plus almost three years ago, we started talking about it. Um I had just started and we talked about looking at this as integrating because we were talking about marketing and trying to get. People onto the website and because we have so many people that often active, uh uh often look at rec programming. We're actually sending them off our website right now to go to MyRec, cause it's not integrated. But they didn't have, they had a a um a beta test system. They bought, um well, they they went in and and decided that they didn't wanna do that, so they looked at a a company called Rec One. Which was in the, in the community doing this very thing. So they they partnered with them for about six months and then bought them. So basically, it's not, it's not a brand new thing, it's something that was out there, they've just brought them underneath and in fact, hired all their staff. To teach people how to use it, so um it it is, is comparable to to MyRec. I think MyRec is antiquated in some ways, they've been doing it a long time. I think this, one of the big things is about, is really, it's hard upfront. Most users are not gonna see much of a difference, it is easier to use, I believe, upfront, on the front side. The backside is where we're gonna see a lot of benefits um for time and and trying to make this easier for us to. To work through so we can, we can manage our time better.
So one of the goals that council had when we talked about restructuring for Parks and Rec. Was to try to maximize Mitch's time as the sole employee. To be getting out and doing work and not tied to the back office function quite as much. And that is what's driving me to recommend this.
Any other questions or comments? I do remember when we brought in MyRec and it was a big, big jump for us to get. Into the computer age of that, so this is just another extension and I think it's gonna be much more user friendly, from what I can tell. But I will take a vote on order eighteen ninety-five, all those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, passes six to one. Moving on to order eighteen ninety-six. Order authorizing the purchase of up to forty chairs for the Orono Public Library Community Room from WB Mason of Bangor, Maine. In an amount not to exceed twenty-seven hundred with funds drawn from the Library Construction Fund. Take a motion, please.
Move approval?
Alright, Lori.
Hi, Lori Carpenter, Library Director. I'll just take it, okay. If you remember, you recently approved um purchase of seven chairs um for the main library lounge chairs. Taken from the library construction budget. Sophie and I have had conversations about the possibility of council rolling that budget into a reserve fund, library reserve fund. Um as of next year, so we were talking about what other needs there might be. And for me, the library community room chairs um rose to the surface. When we moved into the library in two thousand and nine, we um saved some money and we used some excess chairs from the council chambers. And we've been using them for nine years and we find that they are not really meeting our needs. They've had a good life and they look like it. We really need some lightweight stackable chairs that will take up less space. So I looked at three different, I'm sorry, two different companies, WB Mason as well as Levec Business Company. And did some research online to see if we could find anything that was comparable and a fair. and did some research online to see if we could find anything that was comparable, um, and a fairly good price. And came down to, um, a chair made by National Public Seating, eighty-five hundred series. When I compared them, they all looked, they were very, um, comparable, you know, same. They all had the same or similar weight limit. They all were similar, um, weight themselves. They, um, stack at about forty inches high, twelve, forty inches high. Um, right now, three of these are forty inches high stacked. And if you go into our small community room, sometimes they're all stacked along one whole wall. Um, with twelve stacking, um, forty inches, we can get three, um, three stacks rather than the, the entire wall. They're about twenty inches wide. Um, let's see, so they're, um, what I'm looking at is more like nineteen hundred rather than the twenty-seven hundred. Um, also they stack higher on a dolly, but we're opting not to do the dolly because of the space it takes up. Um, when the, when the chairs are in use, it's still taking up some space. And again, our community room is limited space. We don't have a closet to store them. We store them right out there in the room. Um, also when you put all forty chairs on the dolly, it's seventy-seven inches high, which I think might be a bit of an issue with, um, kids in the room. So it get, they get heavy use, um, especially after school. Teens are in there, um, most every day. But then we have other programs with kids and adults. Um, so having lightweight, cleanable is, um, prime. Um, so anyway.
I'm just gonna interrupt. As I, um, informed the Council Finance and Operations Committee, uh, we, this has been in progress and unfortunately, uh, Lori's vacation and my time off has, they've kind of not lined up. And so finally today, we were able to, um, get to a point where, uh, I would, uh, recommend for record keeping for, um, to make the budget tie that we use, um, that you amend this order to allow us to expend up to one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars as opposed to the twenty-seven hundred. It, it will just tie better.
Okay. So could I get a motion to amend? Does that work?
Second.
All right. I will take a, um, vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor? All right. So we have amended the motion to nineteen fifty. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Lori? Nope. All right. I will take a vote on order eighteen ninety-six as amended. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now you're gonna test me on this one. Order eighteen ninety-seven, order authorizing the purchase of a Rigaku Progeny Rescue Ramen Spectroscope from Technica Inc. of Connecticut in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with this amount reimbursed by the town of, to the town by the Main Energy Emergency Management Agency through the acceptance of new grant fifteen thousand and annual reimbursement allocation funds, ten thousand. And whoever motions has to say that name.
Pretty quiet.
I'll just take a motion.
I so move with the Rigaku Progeny, Progeny Rescue Ramen Spectroscope.
Thank you. All right. Jeff, please.
What we're looking to do is bring laboratory technology into the field for the hazardous materials team. And, uh, while spectroscopes have been available to us for a while, they haven't had really good reliability up until recently. And, uh, I don't claim to be a scientist or to know anything about spectrography beyond what I can tell you about this particular device. What we will do with this, uh, the device itself isn't much larger than the wooden name tence that are in front of you here. And what, uh, we'll do is we'll take a sample that we collect from whatever material is that we're unsure of. And the device is specifically for either, uh, confirming what the sample is or for identifying an unknown sample when we get it. We'll take it, we'll place it in front of a laser light that the machine emits. And as the laser light excites the molecules and whatever the sample is, it tends to, uh, come up with peaks and valleys on a graph. And each material that we, uh, sample, uh, out of a database, I'll talk about the database in just a second, has a, a specific signature. So it's almost like the material has a fingerprint. And there are twelve thousand plus materials in that handheld device that we can access. There are also, uh, two hundred and fifty plus illicit drugs that are available for us to access in that. If we come up against something that we're not able to, um, identify through the machine, uh, we have a way to contact, uh, Rigaku back in Japan actually and have them identify it for us. So there's a, a large database, uh, that's available for us. Um, there are free updates that would come to us. Um, yeah, we will get a, a warranty with the machine when we purchase it. It is a loaner model. The actual device itself, brand new, is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, because this is a demo unit, we're getting it for twenty-five. Um, the commitment out of our, uh, Main Emergency Management local funding, if you will, the, the annual allotment we get is ten thousand dollars. And Main Emergency Management has said, we really find value in this. We're gonna support you with, uh, fifteen thousand or whatever we can find through grants as far as that goes. So there is a little bit of a match there. Um, we'll be the only ones around that have it other than DEP and it's, uh, uh, to get it from them is, uh, can be a difficult process. It could be anywhere in the state. If we're lucky, it's in Bangor, but more than likely it's down around the Portland area or in other places where the use of it's, uh, more likely to, to happen. So, um, is that enough of a summary or?
The only thing I would add is that you can call Japan twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if I remember the lesson you gave me.
That is correct, yes.
And then I would also just, uh, let people know that this is Jeff Lowe, our fire chief, on his maiden voyage in front of town council.
I apologize if I forget to say that. I was so excited to talk about the spectrometer. I didn't even think about it.
Any questions or comments for Jeff?
Yes, thank you very much for that. It's great that you're able to get a demo version. Uh, does it have the same warranty as if we had bought one that was new?
When I spoke to the vendor, I believe it'll be the same warranty. Actually, I think they will take the unit that we actually have right now. Uh, we've been, uh, kinda using a little bit. Take it back, uh, go through it to make sure that it, all the systems are working right. Uh, the database is up to date and then, um, it will come back to us with, I believe, a full warranty, as I understood it.
So in a former life, I was a chemist and I used a spectrometer and a lot of my time was spent fixing it.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the maintenance plan for this?
Um, I am under the belief that it will fall under the same funding that, uh, we currently manage the rest of the hazardous materials equipment with. I don't know if it's gonna cost us eight thousand dollars a year to fix or three thousand dollars or three hundred. I think it's gonna depend on how we store it and how we treat it and, um, considering it's life safety equipment, um, in very high consequence environments or, we use it in very high consequence environments. I would think that we would wanna kinda treat it with kid gloves, I guess. I don't know.
So there's not a separate budget for the maintenance or there is?
So we have a HESMAT budget of, um, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year that are, are local funds. They come from Penobscot County and the University of Maine, not general fund taxes. Um, so for minor repairs, the, some of those funds would be available. But, um, more likely than not, um, if there was any significant expense, we would be reaching back to the state and allocating that reimburse, reimbursable expense. Um, you know, the state has ponied up essentially all of the money for this, whether it's in our allocation or in new grant. And I just wanna clarify, most of the time when you see the word grant, there's documents and you accept a formal grant. Um, that's not the way Main Emergency Management works. We, we agree that we'll accept their money and they cut us a check after we make the expense. So, um, I think that's how we would do it, Lori, is, um, in that manner.
So a point of information from when you spoke about this in front of a committee meeting in support of getting it is that when, when people are, encounter an unknown substance and they have fear, that, that has a huge negative impact, even if that unknown substance is something that is not toxic. If you don't have lab facilities on site, and this is basically a mobile lab, then it takes a long time to figure out if a substance is actually hazardous. And in that time, there's all sorts of panic. And I know that at the university, when there's a fire, it's people leave because there's a fire, but often they can't go back in until all the substances that are not in containers that are labeled are tested to make sure that things are safe. So I think it's a great thing to have. I think it's very progressive that our fire, of our firefighters would have it. And, and I'm very supportive of it, but I forgot to ask you last time about the maintenance. So otherwise I'm, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Um, Jeff, how much, what's the lifespan on something like this?
I, w- we're thinking seven to ten years. Um, that, the ten year mark might be, um, reaching a little bit. Um, where it's new technology, we're hoping we'll be able to continue to upgrade and update it. I should say relatively new technology, we'll be able to upgrade and update it. Um, that's what we're thinking.
Okay, thank you.
How, how often do you think you might use something like this?
Um, honestly, I don't know what the response data is completely for the team yet. I think that anytime we went to, let's say, I'll pick on the postal service for a powder call there, if something falls out of an envelope, it would have an application there. So even, even a couple times a year, it would, it would see, um, it's worth an expense, if you will. Uh, by being able to get in early and identify a substance, we can slow down the spin-up of the entire team, which is very costly. So if that were to occur, what we would do is we would send in, we'd make the call for the team. But we would send an advance party out. And, um, within sixty seconds after we can get a sample in front of the scope, we're able to identify what it is, provided it's one of those twelve thousand plus chemicals, which more than likely it would be. Um, so there's, there's, uh, a savings in, um, efficiency and not over-resourcing, uh, calls as well. Um, so would it be a, an immediate return? Probably not, but I would think over a couple of years, we would be able to, to get, uh, a return on that, the expenditure, if you will.
I, I just wanna say, I feel like if, if we have to use it only one time and it stays alive, I think there's a return. I mean, I don't think it's something we need to like
Sure.
have a certain number to say it's worth it.
Right, if there's not a whole lot of maintenance. If you're only using it once or twice a year, so, right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I'll take a vote on order eighteen ninety-seven. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to council committee representative reports. Who wants to go first?
I'd be delighted to.
Tom would like to go first.
We had a long finance and operations committee meeting last Wednesday morning. And many of the items that we discussed here were discussed at that meeting. We thought that representatives of First National Bank on our investment strategy with our reserve funds would be very interesting. Um, we reviewed the emergency medical services agreement, account of easy, for a one-year extension. Um, we, we talked about the, um, public works adjustment to, to use that forty thousand dollars savings for, um, some improvements in equipment. We talked about the recreation, um, department's request for the software change and a lot of detail on that. And we talked about the purchase of chairs for the library. And we talked about the purchase that Chief Lowe was just reviewing with us. All, all of those items we went over, a lot of detail and we had a lot of questions and we got good answers. It was a two-hour meeting.
All right. Sam, you wanna go next?
Sure. Um, we had the, uh, Community Development Committee meeting on May twenty-fourth, was exciting and a little excitable. Um, hit a few things. Um, we talked about a downtown parklet. We discussed the plan to build a small parklet that would cover three of the parking spaces in the alley between Margaritas and Omland, Omland Yoga. Uh, it would be a seasonal structure that would be removed before snow flies. Uh, the goal is to provide an attractive and highly functional outdoor public space for people, uh, to congregate and, and bring that sense of community. Uh, it's to include benches, possible table space with planters for greenery and flowers, a well-designed kiosk for public postings with a certain designated area for, uh, restaurant menus, uh, sort of shielded from the traffic of there. So the seating would all be on, um, on the sidewalk side. Um, it's an affordable trial run of creating new community space and I've asked for this, uh, to have this added to the agenda for the meeting on the twenty-fifth. So that'll be coming up.
It was the twenty-fifth, right?
Uh, item two is Gould's Landing. There are concerns, um, about some of the things we're developing there. Uh, Gould's Landing on Peshaw Lake has become the only free public access point on the lake since Glenburn has closed their landing space to the public. Uh, this has created, uh, an, a, uh, an increase in the usage and the traffic at Gould's Landing, often by non-Orono residents. Parking is a huge issue and it results in people, um, parking along the roadway, which is narrow to begin with. And that has become a safety issue, uh, where emergency vehicles, uh, could potentially be blocked from reaching some of the residences in that area. Uh, concern has also been voiced about some of the behavior that happens at a small park. Uh, we're considering restricting parking, establishing a permitting process for all vehicles and increasing police patrol. Uh, permits will be free, um, but required of, of everyone. The permits will be free to Orono residents and there will be a fee for permits for non-residents. Um, the permitting process will take some time as permits may not be available until after the season. Uh, however, the signage, uh, marking no parking zones and the increased police patrols have already gone into effect. Um, item three, drive-through restaurant in the Village Commercial District. We'd been asked to look at an ordinance regarding drive-through restaurants in the Village Commercial District. This has been an ongoing topic for much of the year. Planning Board has had two meetings about this and made a recommendation not to approve such a change in the ordinance, uh, but to fully exercise due diligence. Um, we've asked staff to look at the comprehensive plan to see how it aligns with this recommendation. Um, also this will ensure that all members of the council will be involved in the process. And that is basically.
Wow, thank you very much. Megan, the tough fact to follow.
Man, okay. So the, um, Comp Plan Implementation Committee met on Monday, June fourth. Um, we had a, a double dose of, um, vernal pool action that night. So first, uh, before the vernal pools, we, uh, we heard from TY Lynn International, uh, who did our Park Street Corridor Traffic Study. Um, so we have the, the final information on that. Um, so the plan, uh, that we're thinking will probably have to happen is renewing, um, we'll have to talk about renewing that moratorium one more time as we digest this information, but with the hopes of kind of moving that process along. Um, then we talked about vernal pools, part one, um, where we were looking at the progress on our SAMP plan, our Special Area Management Plan ordinance, um, so that we can, uh, look at areas of town that, um, might have vernal pool situations and figure out how to offset any, um, sort of impediments to those vernal pools, uh, in, in a rural area in the town. So we're, we're working on that plan and it's moving forward, um, quite well. Um, we talked about the, um, briefly about the student home land use ordinance that's already been adopted and, um, have confirmed that we, we will be putting on the forum, uh, a request that landlords disclose if it's a student home, if it meets that criteria to be a student home. So we're, we can gather data and, and know kind of what's going on in our rental pool in town. And finally, we talked about the, this is vernal pool part two. Uh, we talked, uh, about the main tech park. We had an update on the, um, wetland mitigation application. Um, and things, things are progressing well in that department as well, so. Oh, oh, I have another report. The Orono Historical Society, I almost forgot. We had, it's only because it's late, not because of the meeting, because that meeting was very interesting. We, uh, normally, uh, meet in Bird Street School, but we had the pleasure of getting a tour from our wonderful, uh, town clerk. Um, and we saw all of the, the insight, well, the, the department heads, this is nothing new to you, but it was exciting to see all of the, the back nooks and crannies of this building. Um, our primary, um, focus was to look at and talk about the records restoration issue that's going on with the town right now. Um, and, and how the Orono Historical Society members might volunteer their time upcoming to help out with that. Um, we also, after that tour, talked about the cemetery tour that, uh, Mitch is helping putting together. Um, there was a outside group that approached the Historical Society saying, we'd love a cemetery tour of your cemetery. And so they, uh, Mitch, uh, has been, has been helping, uh, OHS put something together, um, so. Um so I'm sure other, other folks could use it as well. Um and that finally, they're uh about to kind of launch into a PR campaign for new members. Um the Orno Historical Society understands the need for um not just new members, but members of varying age groups, particularly to kind of continue some of the traditions that um the, the members who are older have, have kind of set in motion. So if you are interested in being a member of the Orno Historical Society, the dues are ten dollars a year. Um they meet the first Wednesday of every month in the Bird Street School, but they do not meet in July. So if you wanna join, hold that thought until August.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to future agenda items and items of concern. Cheryl, do you have any? Alright, Megan, do you have any?
Other than you need to go to bed, I have none.
Alright, Tom? Tom? Lori? Sam?
Vote tomorrow.
Right. Good, okay. Public petitions? Don't think we have any? Public comments? No? Yeah?
Um I guess my, it's more of a question for council. I know it's not on the list, but we're at the end of the meeting. Um we've just gone through this public hearing process. You did not, you got some very valuable insight, but no specific direction with the budget. Um what is your pleasure? Are we moving forward with the meeting on Monday night to review the public hearing information on Monday, the eighteenth? Or are we moving this to the June twenty-fifth council, special council meeting for adoption?
My opinion, Sophie, is you, you brought it down to a dollar. And so I was wondering if we could just go over how you did that? It's council's pleasure.
Um actually, very easy. It was a suggestion made at the last um budget workshop. We had um the North Main Avenue Project, talked with Rob. Um while all of North Main Avenue is not part of the Downtown and Transit Oriented Tiff District, um there is enough at the mouth of um North Main Avenue and along the sidewalk to be able to fund the fifty thousand dollar North Main Avenue Project budgeted for this year from the Downtown and Transit Oriented Tiff District. That was the revenue and there was an increase on the um expense side minimal, but there was an increase because we had budgeted the town planner um with one level of benefits and they, he went and got married and it changed his benefit package. So we made a little alteration and it brought it from, I think it was at a dollar and eleven cents, down to a dollar even.
Um councillors, what's your pleasure? Do you wanna meet on Monday? Or would you like to wait till the twenty-fifth?
I, I'm personally fine. We'll be budgeted forward to the twenty-fifth, as it is.
I agree.
Okay, we have consensus to move it to the twenty-fifth. Any other questions? Okay. Um I will move for adjournment then, please.
So move. Second.
All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good job.
Town staff, if you can help Shelley get this room ready for the election, that would be amazing.